Okay, was everybody who was at the last meeting, who's on the committee, were there any problems that you saw on it? Is there a motion to okay the minutes?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Okay. All right. Way on. I think before, as we had started, so we have Michael Murdock here, the Vice President of Moats, who's the engineering firm that's, who's going to be our Maintenance Plan Advisor. And we have Mike Richly here, our Architect. But there's, they don't, well, Mike knows most of the people, but you do not. So let's go back. Why don't we do an introduction? I was gonna suggest, take, if each member of the committee could take a minute to talk about their expertise, why they're on the committee, and the work they've done thus far for the committee, just not in detail, but just broadly. And then when we're done introducing ourselves, we can maybe have the folks who are attending also introduce themselves, so we'll kind of review here. Okay, so.
Terry Holm, Superintendent. My expertise, I feel like I've been doing this a long time. I feel like I really got schools and kids and buildings.
Jacob McGrath, Treasurer.
Megan Winston, Principal here at Mills Lawn.
Jack Heder, Principal of the Middle School and High School.
TJ Jura, I'm a member of the Board of Education. I'm a filling member of her, the normal member, and since she's on vacation, I'm just filling in for her time.
Both can be used.
Okay.
I'm Judah Hamfling, I'm on the School Board, Chair of the Facility Committee, and have been working primarily with the experts on the committee since we have to serve Sunshine Mall, we can't be talking to the whole committee outside the meeting, so that's primarily who I've been working with.
Scott Fife, I'm a community member and retired school administrator.
I'm Mike Richly, Richly Architects.
Mike Slaughter, I'm a community member, I'm an Electrical Engineer, I'm tasked with looking at the IT and the electrical.
Jerry Bethmeyer, I was a school as a civil engineer, I spent 23 years in plant engineering and 27 years with a multi-discipline engineering firm that worked with industrial facilities.
Craig Conrad, I was Maintenance Supervisor here for 27 years, retired in 2012.
Then you want to start, Carlos, yeah, just.
Carlos Landaburu, I am a villager, and I'm here to tape the meeting.
Go ahead and introduce yourself. Corey Van Oostal, I'm an alumni parent.
Jody Miller, I'm a parent. Can text me.
David, another parent.
I'm Gavin DeVore Leonard, I'm a parent, I'm also on Village Council, I guess I should say that.
Lauren Schadls, here, and go for the next question.
Dave Dyer, a parent.
Cool. Well, thank you, everybody who's here tonight. So, tonight, primarily, oh, and I should say, we're missing a couple of our members. Oh, we know Dr. Boquet, who's on the School Board, is in France right now, visiting her family. We have David Roach, who is an ASHI Certified Inspector, who's been one of the building experts. Chris Hamilton, he's an Aerospace Engineer, he was formerly on the former Facility Task Force and is a parent. And Conetta Sanford, one of our teachers, has taken the summer off, she teaches here at Mills Lawn. And Brian Mayer, is he coming tonight? I don't know if he's.
He might be out of town.
Okay, is our, I'm not gonna say it right, he's the music, the orchestra.
Orchestra in grades five through twelve.
Yeah, okay. Is there anybody else?
Richard.
Oh, Richard Zoff is not here. And he's, I know he's over at Antioch, working with their Workday over at the college, he's kind of the jack-of-all-trades kind of person. And, is there anybody else? Is anybody else in the committee? Okay. So, we're gonna start out, so Michael Murdock is the Vice President of Moats Engineering, his daughter is President, I believe. And we have, the school district has hired Moats Engineering to be our Maintenance Plan Advisor, and tonight he's going to just describe the scope of their work, their work plan, and maybe some of your experience.
Sure.
And.
Okay.
Okay, here's a handout from them.
And he's actually on the agenda with Michael for Thursday.
Oh, there it is. There it is.
Oh, for Thursday's meeting.
Okay, great.
All right, Mike Murdock.
Yes.
Okay. Moats Engineering.
That's it all.
I'm a civil and mechanical engineer. I've been working on buildings and concrete engineering for about 35 years. Moats Engineering is a, we're the fourth generation owners of Moats Engineering, it's one of the original, is one of the founding engineering firms of the Ohio Purveyors and Engineering Board. It's an 85-year-old firm. We specialize, we have about 45 employees, we have offices in Orlando, Oklahoma, Cincinnati. We specialize in higher ed and K-12 projects. We design, engineer K-12 projects all over the state and in Florida as well. We, one of the things we do is these kinds of studies where we go in and evaluate, and buildings of all sorts, but frequently they're K-12 buildings, we evaluate the buildings and perform what essentially is a facility condition assessment, where we evaluate the assets, the condition of the assets in the building, identify what we think the remaining life cycle is, identify what we think the replacement cost or repair cost would be, if there's such a thing, and kind of aggregate that and provide a report that identifies the status of each system. And we get very detailed, we take photographs, we evaluate the equipment, determine if it's obsolete, if it's to be repaired, if it's performing as it should, to the degree we can. And then we provide what we think would be a reasonable estimate to get the work replaced or repaired. So, in addition to that, part of my scope of this particular assignment is to produce a maintenance plan. The maintenance plan will have raw data about each piece of equipment, model serial number, age, if we can identify it. If we can find the original manufacturer's maintenance requirements, we'll dig those out and identify what maintenance the piece of equipment should be getting, if it's in getting those, and then we'll put that in some kind of database. So one of the questions I have is, how do you want that delivered? Do you want it delivered in a binder? Do you want it delivered in a facilities, facilities maintenance software pool? Or how do you want, how do you want to go forward? This is a lot of data, literally, any mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, like fixed, any item we can, we can identify, we're going to try to identify and put it in the database. At the conclusion of that, we're gonna make recommendations on what we think your facilities would need in order to bring them up to a like-new condition, and we'll try to coordinate that with Mike and his, his report, his study, so that we're consistent along what his plans are, so we're not either overshooting or undershooting, we understand what you're, what you can't afford to do, what your budget allows you to do, and then, and then provide that information accordingly. So that's, in essence. And in the purpose of all this, and this is essentially the first step in any design we would perform for any client, would be to go in and evaluate their facilities, identify what's, what's there, what can be used, I'm sorry. I'm pointing at gestation. Okay. So, this is a very common exercise in, in what we do, to go in and evaluate the existing conditions.
Keep going, I'm sorry, someone's trying to get in.
Oh, okay. So in terms of what, Dr. Holden, one of the things she asked me to do in preparation for this meeting is provide a approximate schedule as to when we would start. So if you want to go to the very top, our plan would be to bring my mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection team out here somewhere in the range of July 20, we'd probably spend the entire day here, there'd be four or five of us, and we'd go through each building, top to bottom, taking photographs, identifying as much information as we can. Hopefully, there's some floor plans in the building that would be useful. And then, we take all that information back, start organizing it, I'd come back out on the 27th, and we would have my low-voltage team, we'd look at any building automation systems, any building control systems, you have the security system, you have any technology, love to talk to your technology consultant, if you have, or whoever your technology person is, so that he can, he or she can inform me as to what they have, and we can get our sense of what you, what you have. Fire alarm would be the other low-voltage system we would look at. And then, my, my structure and envelope consultant, THB Engineers, is, he, he's, when I talked to him this evening, he thought the 2nd of August is about when he would want to come out here. Again, he would bring a team, I suspect they would have ladders, and they would get on the roof, and they would walk around the entire exterior, they're gonna look at the roof very carefully, they're gonna do some scans of the roof, they're gonna look at windows and doors, foundations, walls, chimneys, and then the site conditions around the space in terms of access, steps, ramps, guardrails, et cetera, fall hazards, any kind of nuisance items. And then he would begin, he would start working on his, his report. We would probably come up and join him so we could look at some of those conditions as well, I'd probably be here, or one of my guys would be here in regard to that. We anticipate by August 19th producing a draft report. The draft report would be rough, it would go through each system, it would have some of our preliminary conclusions, we wouldn't make any kind of recommendation yet, we would, we would just be reporting on what we know, what we found. And it would be very technical, and it would be, you know, to the degree we can find maintenance requirements, we'll have those as well. And then, and that report would be submitted, and I suspect I would expect that the committee or whomever would digest it, and then I would come up on the 23rd, and we would have a discussion. And you would hammer me probably pretty hard about what's in the report, and argue, I don't know if "argue" is the right word, but debate, discuss, it's generally a pretty active meeting, that first meeting after report. Get feedback, try to understand if we have to go revisit spaces and revisit systems, we do that, we'd submit a second preliminary report, what I typically call a 90% draft. This would include recommendations, it would include anything I could, I could get from my structural inspection. We'd again try to coordinate that report with Richly Architects, make sure we're consistent with where he's going, and then have another discussion sometime in early September. My goal would be to give you a final report sometime mid-September. And in, and at that time, I'd also have the maintenance data formatted in whatever format you guys wanted in. So, oh, I don't know, if you, you participate in the OFCC system, but they have a system in Oaks that is the maintenance report, you have to conduct, whenever we do any kind of design or commissioning for an OFCC building.
So, I want to stop you here.
No problem.
Somebody asked, Jerry asked of Jay, are we eligible for OFCC money? The answer is yes and no. We absolutely were eligible for OFCC money, but as, as we've explained before, and we need to continue to explain, we are only eligible for the ALP program. So because of that, because our renovate-to-build-new ratio is so high, we only qualify for OFCC money if we build new. That's just the long and the short of it, our, they go by property wealth, you know, the amount of property you have in the, in the district. So, we did, if you remember, in November of '21, that was an OFCC ALP project with 26%. That was my question, what's the Oaks, is it a?
It's just a data, their software, their online system. So they have, and I would imagine, since you're a public school, you would be eligible to use their system. I would assume. It, maybe I'm wrong, but anyway, the system, Oaks is an acronym, I can't tell you what it means, it's something.
We can call our consultants about what it means, correct?
Yeah. So that format that they use essentially was required when the state started funding a lot of these public schools around the, around the state. They would build a school, and the school district wouldn't do the maintenance, and they'd be back five years later replacing things. So they established this maintenance database and this maintenance study, or maintenance requirement.
Correct.
In that, and so, we routinely fill that, that maintenance report out when we design a building or we commission a building, and a turnover that has to be finished. So, we can use that, we can use another, there's all kinds of databases out there for more management.
Do you have a preference?
Well, there's a really inexpensive one, it's got an odd name, it's called SchoolDude. It's about $2,000. I think you buy it, you get it, it's relatively simple, it works probably for 90% of the schools out there. If you're a big, big public school, like a Columbus or Cincinnati Public, probably is inadequate. But I would, I would, I could give you a list if you want to evaluate them, there's some really inexpensive ones. But it's basically a, a database for your data, and it's a work order management system. So allows you to, as a, as a, you know, employee in the school, to issue a work order, or say, hey, I have this stained ceiling tile, and the maintenance guy can come over and look at it. We can also use that as an archive for any drawings, or for any data we collect, or any, any owner's manuals, or any, any of the stuff that we generate when we're doing the study. It can be a depository for that information. So, once you buy it, you know, and it just has to be put on a, on a computer somewhere here.
What kind of purchase?
I think so. I'm not, not for sure, I, I think it is a one-time purchase, a perfect purchase.
Double updates.
Yeah, they're probably trying to get you for a hundred bucks a year or something. But I think it's a.
Or the cloud.
Yeah, it's cloud, probably. I'd agree, it's probably.
We currently have a maintenance management system.
Well, it may be.
Just want to make that clear, we do have a maintenance management system.
Yeah.
Does it do everything that SchoolDude does? I do not know, and we will have to.
Well, we're gonna look at it, we certainly will load the data into your existing system, if that's, if you want to do that.
Is Oaks, my guess is that all of these databases, you can extract it into Excel.
Yes.
Oaks is just what?
The state requires.
Requires and uses, and you're saying it's a digital, like an online database?
Yes.
So, like, I imagine we'll be able to download any of those reports if you wanted to.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, when we generate the data, a lot of it, the raw data will be in an Excel format that we upload into your database. Once we understand how your database works, we, we mirror that, and, and then we upload it right into it. So, yeah, it's, and then, you know, all the books and photos and all that kind of stuff, you may want to put it somewhere in your database, it's not necessarily, you know.
What's the name of ours?
Well, ours is part of a bigger system we have, it's called EasyMeet, it's, it's a whole suite of, it's how we do our safety reports, it's how we do our safety training, it's how we do our student discipline.
So it's kind of disciplined for schools, or specifically tailored for schools?
Well, I mean, it's part of public school work.
It's part of public school work, so it's, yeah.
Okay.
You know, does it, is it as sophisticated as SchoolDude? Probably not, but I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
But we do have a, I mean, for us, it manages our maintenance requests, so if I'm a classroom teacher and I want something done, you can't just say, hey, Craig, I need this done, you need to put it in as a work request, so that we can track this.
Does it handle fixed assets?
Scott, I don't think so.
Is that something you'd want it to do?
Um, not necessarily, no, because that's done differently as well. You know, there's, the maintenance or even like technology, okay, like, technology should be inventorying student laptops, but that's, a student laptop isn't a fixed asset, so it gets kind of muddy to mix those.
I'd like to just throw a couple things out. One is, Terry, I wanted to follow up on something you said about OFCC funding. I don't want to get ahead of this process, but let's say this results in the renovation of two projects. The process to get funding for that would be a two-thirds waiver request, so, because the renovation will, by their standards, will exceed two-thirds of the cost of new construction, Superintendent will be required to send to the OFCC a letter stating why these buildings are to be kept, their committee reviews it, they send a team down to look at the buildings and make their own assessment of if the building's gonna be kept, and then report back. My, my opinion is, given the age of the buildings, that's not a slam dunk, particularly if it were, you know, I don't want to get ahead of it.
I mean, you're right.
Yeah.
And Valerie, our consultant, was very upfront about that. She's like, look, you can do it. She's like, I don't approve it, but I'm gonna tell you, probably not, because what they look at is, what is the kind of architectural and historical value of the buildings? And I think a reference point for me, what helped me understand it, is I come from Cincinnati, where Cincinnati Public Schools have many old buildings that have whole walls of local, original local tiles. Some of the schools were on the, you know, Historic Register. That is something that would drive a two-thirds waiver.
So I just wanted to make sure the committee is aware that if, if these end up being renovation projects, state funding is not given.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
And then, secondly, I was just gonna comment on, Michael, I appreciate the database and stuff, but just in my experience, I would just consider keeping it simple, because things change, and you have a small district, and if you can go find a binder somewhere in a few, in four years where this is all printed versus lost in the cloud in some software update, just something to consider.
Or just electronic documents.
Yeah, so I think we're looking for that.
No problem.
And.
That's fine.
Yeah. I want the data.
That's fine, however you want it sorted out. It'll be digitized in our office, so in its own future day, if you want it, we'll certainly give it to you, however, whatever format you want. But yeah, binders are not uncommon.
Okay. Was there anything more you wanted to?
Well, in the final report, whatever maintenance costs and schedules we identify would be in there, any kind of construction cost would be in there, and I probably want to make sure that I was consistent with what Michael thinks. Any kind of duration or schedule information, anything that we think would be pertinent in terms of you making the decision, we try to provide, you know, that would be the intent of that last piece. And if there's other things you wanted to report, I'm happy to add those or discuss those, whatever you think you need to have.
And are these dates just kind of targets on your end?
Yeah.
Like, August 23rd isn't, isn't, it's just a date?
Well, I have to coordinate with you all, right? Because that may be a date you don't want, you know, or it's, so, part of it would be what works for you, it's kind of where we would like to start, you'd like to start?
And that, but that general timeline?
Yes. Correct.
Do you, that you want to take with your meetings, do you want to do those on your own, with your own group, as you go through the schools?
I'm sorry, I didn't want to try to stay, what was it?
When you go through the buildings?
Yeah.
With your team?
Yeah.
Do you want to do that alone?
Yeah, I mean, if someone wants to join us, there might be somebody, a Maintenance Supervisor, somebody that needs unlocked doors, or can get its access, but, I mean, we're, generally, we scatter, so the plumbing guys go look at the plumbing stuff, mechanical guys go find the mechanical equipment, electrical, you know what I mean, and it's general, they're doing their, they're doing their own thing. So we mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineers will all be pretty good at their things.
So, August 23rd, you're gonna do that preliminary report, so, so this Thursday, you're coming to school board, is that what you told, said?
I think that's you asked me to be there.
That's what you said, yeah. Cool, okay.
I mean, more cameras?
So we're gonna do, more cameras, yes. So, so there were gonna be three meetings, which were gonna be with the Facility Committee and two meetings with School Board. So I was just looking at the schedule here. One thing that we've all done, like, users have done a users, they've done a questionnaire, which is information that I think would be useful to you.
Sure.
The experts have looked at the different systems, they're rather cursory looks, but they have, they were talking with Craig Conrad in our current.
Sure, any information.
So we, so, we could probably get that to you now, you know, you may find some of it's not, when you take a deeper look, or not, you know, thorough, or are missing things, I'm sure they will be. So I guess my thought, though, is that on, so you're gonna do a preliminary report on the 23rd, so you were gonna come back to us at some point, go to the School Board at some point, so I'm wondering if the preliminary, it makes sense to me that the, you would be coming to the committee for that, with that preliminary report, and have that going to take that you were talking about?
Yeah. Yeah, you tell me if you don't want me to report, you tell me where and who you want me to report to.
Well, that's what makes sense to me, if we're doing three meetings, and we've got some people who've been thinking about buildings, you know, this group of people, that that would happen before it came back to, you came back to the School Board, but I'm just wondering, I'm just kind of, I think we should keep it in mind, I'm not quite sure, we have to figure it out tonight.
I don't think we do, and I want to say, Mike, I knew was gonna address this when he, when he talks.
Okay.
Because he and I have met. I guess I have a couple requests. My request would be that we allow Moats to do their assessment. I think they really need to come in and just do their assessment without any input from any of us, because then it's when they present that, then we can ask questions and we can get some understanding. I have all of the, the reports for you that I can review. I'm thinking the 23rd may not be, I mean, I don't know, Mike, what do you think about that timeline, but, but we'll have to kind of juggle some things and Mike's.
Sure, none of this is set down.
But I guess my question was.
And it could be more meetings if necessary, there's no.
You're just thinking about that kind of sequence of timing.
Yeah, right. I want to, I'm trying to, I want to be finished, so that you have the information, so you can act on it by mid-September, late September, I suppose.
I think your, I think your schedule is awesome up till 3, and then I think, I think you went too fast.
Okay, okay.
Between 3 and 4, I, I would recommend, maybe there's a couple months of wrestling that's gonna happen at the committee and the board level. Because I think the final report should let that process happen, so, so, the preliminary stuff is awesome, early September, get that teed up, but then have, have, you know, it's up to you about how many, or have, have the Facilities Committee wrestle with it, and then the Board might even want.
Sure.
To take a bite at wrestling with it, and then the final report then documents where we land.
Sure.
As opposed to happening on the September 16th.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's kind of where my thought is.
Okay. I think you're right, that, you know, once we get that information, we're gonna need some time to digest it and set it up against what we, in the community, kind of know about our community, et cetera, and how to move forward then, as a particular time, and we're gonna need some, to be, have time to have conversations in the community, with the larger community also. Okay, does anybody else have, are there any questions?
I have a question, will your report also prioritize?
Sure.
Need?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's an OFCC assessment with a pretty decent offset, which we gave that to you, and also there's a pretty exhaustive fanning and howling assessment that happened, you need to make sure you get that.
Yeah, I think I've seen that, I think you gave it to McGrath, or published it in the.
And there's a lot in there.
I think we did, but I'm happy to share them.
There'll be a lot in there for your team to see, and it should really help.
Pretty comprehensive. Other questions on the table? Any questions from the citizens?
You know, this process has been going on for quite a long time, it's been followed from get-go, and we decided, hey, something needs to be done with our facilities, and I understand there's information being shared with Moats now, that's great.
And I understand there's information being shared with notes now, that's great. As a citizen, I have a feeling it's going to be very similar to what we found in the past, but it's great. Has this ever been done before? Have we ever done, had an engineer actually look at all these facilities before? Maybe I'm just not recalling. It kind of seems like it's cycling back to what we've been doing for six years now. And I don't mean that, maybe that's just the point to be put out, is, I think a lot of citizens are feeling this way. We've been very thorough in this whole process for a long time. So I'm just, this is great, I appreciate the depth that we're going into this. As a citizen, I'm just concerned that we're just going to keep rehashing this into a new thing. So I hope, hopefully something new comes out of it, I guess, is my hope.
All right. Well, any number of questions or comments? Let's, let's go to Mike.
Okay.
Firstly.
Thank you very much. So my part that'll be helping to lead or facilitate is the educational planning pieces of this, so beyond the pipes and roof and the windows, et cetera, which Michael and his team is going to look at, would be the educational aspects. So I met with Terry, and we kind of designed together a process to get to that answer. And the process we're proposing is a kind of a two-work session format, to put this in position that by the beginning of September, we have some preliminary kind of bubble diagram options for some solutions. So work session number one, and I don't know, Megan and Jack, you guys have heard, but I'll be coming, coming to you to understand how all your existing spaces are currently being utilized, and then what your vision is for the future of the buildings, the deficiencies you see, all encompassing, so administrative areas, educational areas, food service, these things that are impacting the education of kids, counseling, small group, pull-out, all kind of comprehensively. So that'll be work session number one, and I think we've got separate meeting times for both of you. And then we'll come back for work session number two, with some just preliminary ideas or thoughts, just to make sure I'm kind of hearing and understanding your vision correctly. And then we'll work that out together, and then from the findings or the outcome of that, whatever that turns out to be, we'll present to the committee, team that up with Michael's draft report one or two, that early September timeframe. So the goal is, we've got a report on the maintenance plan, the facilities, technical issues, but then also some preliminary reports on the educational adequacy pieces, and so hopefully to give the committee the fullest picture possible of what the needs are and what some possible solutions might be.
And when we're talking about deeper renovation and new construction, are those, is that also going to be a prioritized list?
I don't know if we're going to get there by the beginning of September, but hopefully maybe that two-month of wrestling process is what we can get to as a group, with principal input, superintendent input, some of my thoughts, and then maybe the committee will want to weigh in on prioritizing items.
Questions for Mike or comments?
I think a lot of what will come up in these meetings is what, you know, I know on the agenda, there's a prioritized needs discussion for, from the users list, and I think that's going to come up, because the teachers and other staff are speaking pretty clearly about what they feel are the needs in those buildings.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Do people understand how this is moving forward?
Well, I understand that this process is to see what the needs are and come up with some possible solutions without, at least the initial part is, without respect to cost and what. And then after Mike comes back, there's going to be some, have to be hard decisions to make based on, on budget, budget issues. So, you know, do we focus some of these potential solutions with cost in mind, or we've got a blank check, or how, what's our approach here?
No, we don't have a blank check. I think that we all know that.
But I, I mean, I would say you need the list of what everything costs before you can say, well, this is just too much. So I think, right now, it is looking at that list of needs and addressing those issues and, you know, using their reports. And then the decision on what you do with that is certainly influenced by cost, and what you're willing to ask for, and what you're willing to pay for. But, you know, you don't want to cut some stuff out now and just say, ah, we don't even want to look at it because it's just too much. You need to know that answer. And I don't think anybody has an agreement on what's too much and what needs to be cut out. So I would say we need to look at the full scope.
The first part of this exercise is to identify the needs and come up with possible solutions without regard to cost. Then, after we get that information from September on, then we have to make decisions related to cost issues.
And I think, and I think Judith hit on something where she said we need community conversations. And I want community conversations with my parents and families, and so as we present all of this, right? What, here it is, here are the costs, I mean, we can see, we can say what we think are priorities, but I also want to hear from them, because without them, we don't exist. And it's our goal to make sure we meet the needs of our students and teachers and parents and that. So I think, you know, this, this idea of getting, having community meetings and getting input, even if we feel like we've had it before, I think it's important that we hear from our parents, certainly, as one of the groups, one of the several, no doubt, that we want to be talking to.
When, early on, you know, when the idea of developing a maintenance plan and a permanent improvement plan was developed, you know, the community, when we talked to other schools that, when I was a part of conversations with other schools who do permanent improvement plans, one thing that they made clear is an OFCC report, those kind of reports are not the kind of reports that schools use who do permanent improvement plans. They use, they look at the needs of their buildings, they prioritize those needs. Those buildings are not, do not, are not maintained to the level of new. They're an older building that is, is meeting the needs of the students. And where there is some new construction needed, well, that's going to be a new part of the building. However, to think that this is going to, that we want to, at least my feeling is, what the community said they wanted is to really be able to consider a permanent improvement plan. And that hasn't been done in the past. And that's not what a Fanning-Hallie report was, or an OFCC report was. So, you know, when I am over, you know, Kettering, Centerville, their schools, some of them look very similar to, to those one, on the outside, and I don't know what's going on on the inside. But they're, they're an older building, generally, they look like they've been kept up pretty well. And that's what people in the community said they wanted to consider and understand what that would look like, so that's what we're doing here.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
In, in our studies, we typically, and I'm sure we'll do it here, in terms of cost, make three or four good, better, best recommendations. Because we understand the dollars drive all these decisions and drive all of, you know, what you ultimately can do and can't do. So, you know, we try to identify what we think is the best solution, but recognize sometimes that the school district can't afford it. So what are a good, better, best, and pros and cons? And, you know, every system will have at least three or four of those kinds of options. And we'll be ready to discuss all of those options. And so you are as informed as you can be.
All right. If there's nothing more on that. So the building experts, so we're going to look at prioritization list of the building experts regarding maintenance needs of the current buildings. And so there's a little update report, a couple of, a couple of things that, we divided it, really, they're fairly short lists. The first thing was, oh wait, let me back up. We did have some questions, actually, for all of you. At what level of renovations do current building codes kick in? Because we know that there, what are the, what are the things that kind of set off that now you have to meet this current building code, whereas in the past, you did not?
It really depends on the plans examiner. Do you know who your jurisdiction of authority is?
Green County.
Yeah.
It's not Green County.
It's actually, the village is now.
The, the village dropped Green County, and they contracted with National Inspection Corporation.
Do they do the plans examining? Do they do the plans examining and permit as well?
Yeah.
So usually, there's a discussion, it's not a hard and fast rule. I've been involved in buildings where we do very little, and it's not sprinkled, and they want it sprinkled. And so that's where they draw the line. I've been in projects where it's pretty invasive, and there's, they look at some of the equipment and say, you don't get to worry about the electrical code, or this or that. For us, it's about life safety first. So anything that we think is a life safety issue is immediately addressed, is the highest priority. Code is somewhat nebulous, depends on the examiner, and depends on the jurisdiction and authority. We've had designs passed by, and permitted, codes inspection fine, or plans examiner says fine, and then we have an inspector who, at the end of the job, says, no, I don't want that, I want an exit light here, I want this there, and so you get into this negotiation with the, with the building inspector at the end of the job. So it's, I don't anticipate a lot of code issues here. I hope not, at least.
What, what triggers a full fire alarm upgrade? Something they want with the police enunciations?
That's going to happen. They're not going to ring like that. You're going to have to go to the new, most current fire alarm enunciation, that's, it's good then, anyway. So that's going to save lives. Sprinklers don't necessarily save, takes property now, that's really lives. A fire alarm will save lives. That's definitely true.
Have you encountered a situation where the cost of renovations itself triggers building code requirements?
There is typically in the code a requirement over a certain dollar amount. That does happen, yeah. In Hamline County, that's frequently what they draw a line at, and they say, well, it's over this dollar amount, you're going to bring everything up to code.
Right.
And if you're, if you're doing it over time, do they, is it that whole?
Surely easier to get away with, not bringing everything up to code.
Okay.
Will we include that in the report then?
What I think they'll.
A good, better, best, and, you know, maybe the best is where it triggers, and how much additional. We may want to meet with National Inspection Authority.
That was what Mike, let's meet with them.
Like, once we get a feel for where this is landing, let's have a meeting event as part of this process, and we can meet again.
Right.
How early on are you thinking? Like, are you?
And to let us get into the options and get a feel for where this committee's heading out of, and then we'll take it to the National Inspection Authority, and that would be the one I'm meeting. I think that, yeah.
Between the two of you, and I guess I'm a little unclear on, one thing that's going to be important to me is the educational adequacy of what we're doing. So we're not just, you know, bringing everything up to where we were in 1952. So where is that going to fall between the two of you? It sounds like we have more of Mike's.
Yeah, my, my job to kind of champion that, and then work closely with Michael's team to make sure, hey, we're considering maybe a small addition on this side of the building, and what does he need to do with utilities, make sure that we're prepping, and we're not cutting off anything that's important. But that, that'll be my kind of charge to, to be that voice, that piece of it, and then Mike's team will, will be the maintenance plan and the technical aspects of the engineering.
We support his and your ultimate vision, and how you want to do it, if it's technology, if it's light, if it's acoustics, if it's air conditioning, or whatever, we follow his lead, and what, how he wants to.
And you're getting that with input, both of these are surveys, talking to Jack and Megan, and you guys through the buildings.
Yes, and, and that's not an exclusive. Terry, did you have a larger group for the work sessions than the principals, or?
I'm going to leave that up to the principals, but I think they've, I mean, they've been talking to their teachers for a while now, they know, they look at them.
You know what they want? Pretty clear.
Oh, it's what they need to, because what they, the difference between wants and needs is, is the communities can't promote, and we can't debate on some of the needs, but there's very clear needs that we need, we require, we're going to do the best for our children, too.
Another question was regarding energy efficiency and sustainability. People are interested, community are interested in thinking, having that be part of the fitness work.
Yeah, I think there's a lot you can do in terms of sustainability. First of all, you can't go out and buy a wasteful appliance or air-conditioned appliance nowadays. So everything that's available to us is relatively high efficiency. You can, you can always exceed the requirements, but the code minimums are pretty good compared to what they used to be. So, and, and the code is very specific about, you know, air changes and healthful environments, more so with since COVID, filtration systems are improving, so we expect this next iteration of the, of the building code, and ASHRAE, which is the HVAC industry's governing body, to be much more restrictive on air filtration, air changes, and what kind of quality of the air in spaces, and how we monitor that. But in your, in climate up here, there's a lot of things, I think, we can be very creative in following your effects recommendations, how we heat and cool, and how we do it efficiently. So, yeah, we've done some really interesting things around the state, so.
Cool. Did you have anything specific, Terry? Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Follow-up?
Yeah.
Where would the evaluation of the food service and the cafeteria situation and the eating situations, would that lie with you, or?
I would think equipment would be the extent of it.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah, and, you know, just before, specifically, we do not have a food service consultant on our team. If there's a desire from the committee to get a professional to look at that, that's something we could consider. But from a planning perspective, you know, the size of the serving area, the size of the seating area, you've got some planning issues now that, where you have peaking queuing in corridors because there is no serving area. We can definitely look at the planning aspects of that, and if it needs some expertise, we could recommend that the committee brings on a food service consultant.
I feel like that has been noted as a vacation, especially at the high school. So I just wanted to make sure everything is covered.
What, in terms of, there are certain stand, are there certain standards? My understanding, there are certain standards that the state has, like what OFCC is helping as school, as we develop a, build a school. They have certain square footage requirements for students, is this true?
Yes.
Okay. And is that something that what we currently have will be kind of measured against?
If we want to look at the benchmark of what you currently have versus state standards, we can, we can do that.
Do that, because I think that could be useful. Because I assume, when we were thinking about building new, that those state standards were implied.
Correct, correct. So like when we, when we size, the size of the student dining room, it's based on enrollment, how these get back to some other issues, which we're going to talk about, is about what is a great configuration of buildings, are there multiple options for different configurations in the building? As, because as you add load to certain projects, or to take load out of certain projects, that might take pressure off, or add more pressure, too. So it'll, it'll be interesting. But yeah, we can use OFCC square footage guidelines as a benchmark to help.
So there, because at some point, there's going to be some kind of a comparison trying to be made, you know, in terms of cost, and we want to be thinking about it, I think, as close to apples to apples as possible.
I just, I wanted to ask you a follow-up, actually, on something that you mentioned, looking at some schools in Centerville and Kettering, and saying that they have similar status and a similar history as this building. How do the facilities there compare to the current middle school, high school building in terms of design and renovation history?
in terms of design and renovation history? And that sort of thing? Do you see that a lot in Kettering and Centerville?
I haven't seen as close at hand. We talked to the facility manager about how they go about putting together a permanent plan. However, one thing we're planning to do this fall is take a couple of trips looking at, well, we had talked about older buildings that have been renovated in ways to, you know, meet, you know, current educational needs, to see how other schools have done it. And then there was the idea of seeing a new school, although one of the committee members suggested, instead of a brand-new school, we see a school that's maybe five years old, 10 years old, so we know how they're standing up these newer, these new buildings in terms of, you know, so we have something to think about beyond just the moment in which they're completed buildings, you know, so we can actually see how they function over a few years.
Well, based on what you've seen, would you expect to buy something that's fairly close to what we have over there?
I don't, I don't know for sure. I'm just talking about how they plan to care of their buildings and they don't use the OFCC. They don't use an OFCC recorder.
Do you have any recommendations on projects you've done?
Oh, yeah. We can, yeah. So buildings this vintage are all over the state. We renovated nine very similar vintage buildings two years ago in Forest Hills, Anderson Township down in Cincinnati. Very similar, one-story, you know, similar facades. This is a very common design, brick block, water.
I was talking about our other building.
Yes, I don't know that as well. I've driven by it, walked around it, I haven't been in it. But I think that's, that's a more unique design. It looks like an apartment building for the first time I've looked at it.
That was kind of my point.
Yeah, I don't know. And that's, I haven't seen that designed so much. This is very common.
Right.
And it's typical, 20 years, you go in, you replace carpets, ceiling tile, mechanical equipment. And, you know, they, there's buildings that are 50, 60 years old that just were renovated and they're expecting another 20 or 30 years out of it. So it's not, you know, it's not unexpected.
I just want to make sure we're keeping our focus. And that is, I think, David, if I understand you correctly, your question was about what, where are other buildings like ours? And then Judith, you said, we're really, really want to see other districts that have a maintenance plan to address building needs. But I want to, I just want to emphasize again, it's not a dollars-to-dollars. We're not, we're not talking about the same thing. So what they can do with a permanent improvement levy in terms of really addressing building needs, we cannot do. To get that amount of money in a permanent improvement levy, you might as well have a bond issue because it's so much for us. And I just think it's important to keep that in mind. I mean, we have an expert from Centerville sitting right here on this facilities committee. Scott has done this, and so I think he understands what I'm talking about. So I just want to make sure that we're all kind of aware of that. Doing a maintenance plan at a one, for a 1.2 mil PI is not going to get us anywhere. And I know we know that, but I think it's important to keep going back to that. That is not going to get us anywhere. And as we know, it hasn't gotten us there to begin with. So to think that it's going to get us new systems for even just small additions, like a secure vestibule, it is not going to do that.
Mike, I have a question for you. I was a part of the first round, and I know you worked closely on that. How different do you feel like this scope of this work is compared to that one? As far as when we start talking deep renovations and additions, does it feel wildly different than what the first proposal was?
2018, and I don't want to get ahead of myself, I keep saying that, but I think the big difference is going to be the tower. In the 2018 proposal, the tower came down, and that's your primary educational house. So when that came down, we had to do a significant addition just to make up for what we lost. So I think the biggest difference would be if the lens of looking at that project is primarily to maintain what we have. And if the tower's going to stay, what happens to the band room? What happens to the shoebox? What does the secure vestibule look like? What does other renovations look like? I think those are going to be the differences. So my hunch is it's going to be a much lighter version of the 2012. Like, that's my instincts. But I don't want to...
Right.
I don't want to lead it too far down the road.
Well, so if we're... So that's basically, you know, a big chunk of the work going forward, you guys are going to be doing. We're going to be sharing the information we gathered, and then you're going to take that forward. And then we're going to sort of come back in as a committee, as individuals on the committee, when you start bringing the information you're gathering to the committee. That's kind of what I'm seeing, so what do you think? Well, this is kind of, feels like it's changing gears. The experts got together, we looked at, we actually, we developed an immediate needs list. These are things that we felt needed to be done, really, if possible, over the summer. And if not over the summer, you know, at the beginning of school year. The immediate needs we, I've listed here, Mills Lawn securing window air conditioners that are loose. There are electric boxes over here that have live electric wires in them that are not locked, that need to be locked. And there's two very loose handrails that really are a safety issue. So we feel like those things need to be dealt with, like, pretty immediately. At the middle high school, this is what our folks on the committee saw. There might be other people who don't agree, but was the, there's an antenna. I don't know if anybody's ever climbed it, but it could be climbed very easily. So there was a feeling there needed to be an anti-climb structure put around it. There is a east wall of the tower that was inspected last year by a structural engineer, Shell Meyer, that they said was missing wall anchors that they felt was necessary to really anchor the wall. And so there was a feeling we should check and see what's, has that been done? If it hasn't been done, is it necessary for that to be done sooner rather than later? The issues of the tower stairs, the excessive spacing, the handrails, spindles, the open flooring areas by the stair windows, that those should be addressed soon. And that the exterior stairwell railings, that there's something should be done to make them more secure. And then beyond that, oh, and also the roof juncture between the high school, front of the high school and the gym, where there's evidently happened to leak going on, that it should be addressed. The prioritaries, needs list, I think it's not too surprising. We have roofs first. There is a concern particularly about the roof over the gym in the high school, that it's not been leaking, but concerned that it's need of being replaced. There's a lot of HVAC problems in both buildings. In the middle high school, a lot of it seems to be the controls are not working very well. So there are, and there are the immediate issues with HVAC. If there is some way to make things more comfortable in the classrooms, well, that's true here and in the high school, just in order to make the day-to-day activities in the building in the fall and in the spring more comfortable. We saw the Mills Lawn window units. We think that should be an early priority in terms of replacement. Of course, the whole HVAC and looking at the whole HVAC, how to approach that. In terms of the electric system, our outlets in classrooms, there is still a chromatic panel here in this building, which should be a high priority to replace. The internet reliability is something that we thought with some adjustment of connections could be improved. There's also an issue of the ancient student computers. I'm sure the administration's very aware of that, when those need to be replaced. The high school tower, the second floor, there used to be bathrooms up there. They were taken out, and there's a lot of need for more bathrooms for the students. And evidently, there's still plumbing that's in those walls that, you know, those could be replaced fairly easily. There's the question of, you know, will we be moving towards teachers working out of offices? Well, this, I think the spatialization studies is going to play a role in determining, you know, how this will be done, looking at the accessibility needs for both buildings. And then the trailers at Mills Lawn, which is where the orchestra is working, the orchestra band, that those be a high priority to replace. So those were to replace the prioritization list that we came up with. Questions or comments?
Yeah. I think if you go back up to the Mills Lawn list, I will just say there were three things. Richard came over, so I walked around the building with him. I think he picked the hottest day, by the way. But we, I have the securing the window air conditioner on a list for the community day. I think that's somebody that, you know, that has those tools and knows what they're doing. They can do that. So we are well aware of all three of those, and those will be taken care of by the service.
And some of the high school ones, you know, we are, we've discussed the open flooring, the windows, but quite honestly, there's nothing we can do about the openness of the stairs. I mean, that's just a poor design. There's just nothing that we can really do with that. And it is a safety issue. Chromebooks, you know, I'm getting ready to go in my fourth year here, and I think we purchased 700 student Chromebooks in four years. So I'm going to argue that the age of student Chromebooks is not a connectivity issue. And then, I guess, you said the magic word, Judith, about the space utilization study for this. Change from each teacher having classrooms to offices. Yeah, so. So, and the space, it sounds like you're working with, Mike's going to be working with the school administration about the spatialization study.
Correct. We didn't talk about that, but Terry, you might have talked about it.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have it right here. So here's the...
Who else?
Mills Lawn. And so if you can see, the way, elementary's operate differently than middle schools and high schools, so there's not real movement back and forth. So what she did is, you know, this school day is 6.5 hours, and here's how many hours the rooms are occupied. So if you're thinking about how do we, let's say, for example, there needs to be some type of addition where you have to move kids, there is no way to do that here unless you bring in temporary, a temporary structure. And again, this is in the folder by classroom, and so it's by room. You know, how many hours students are in there, how many hours teachers are in there, and then what's the total occupation of that space.
Is that, are those room numbers key to a plan?
What do you mean? Are they, do they on the floor plan?
Yeah, like, where's room two? Yeah, I mean, I mean, I know this.
Two is right there.
But is that labeled that, like, on that?
They're all labeled.
Okay.
They are. So, so this is Mills Lawn. I'm just going to show you what the middle school, high school one looks like, and then if you have any questions. So this one, this goes by bells because there is movement. So you'd think if there's any room for extra space to be had, it would be here. But out of the seven bell day, you can see how many bells each room is occupied. So that's kind of by room. And then Jack also said, okay, here it is by room, and here it is by period, right? So first bell, there's three classrooms available. And then, you know, so overall, we're not seeing like large spaces, even for, when I think back to that item on the prioritization as, you know, move teachers out of classroom into offices so we can put other classes in there. There's not a lot of room to do that, and there's not an office to put the teachers in. So it's kind of a double whammy. Now, if you have offices, that might, you might be able to work some kind of, the one-year-old here, the two-year-old here, but it's kind of a double problem.
I also, I think it's important to note, from a teacher's standpoint, being a traveling teacher and having to be in a different classroom every period is a significant disruption to their preparation, their ability to have their space, their ability to have materials to set up for class. Like, the idea that a teacher is moving in the same four minutes that the kids are moving and that they're ready to start class. You know, if we're talking about that being a temporary solution while we're doing a renovation and addition, that might be realistic, but long-term, I think that's really a challenging environment for a teacher to teach in.
Did you have the second, the third floor also?
Yeah, here, here.
Oh, there, I'll pick that, thank you.
What room is 202?
That was Ms. Morrison's room, and she taught in the library. So it was, that classroom was so small that all of her algebra classes had to be taught in the library this year. So she traveled, she taught in the library three bells, then taught her classroom three bells because of the size. Yep. And that's when students are in there, so the teachers are in their, on their playing period.
Right, which would be the seventh, which would be the seventh bell.
And your gym is utilized six periods of the day. So the idea of having a separate classroom on stage isn't practical because you've got PE going on there for six periods a day.
I wanted to say, when the experts were talking, when this mentioned of teachers being in offices versus classrooms, there was some, I don't know where, information that there was some potential requirement. When we understood, we understood that the OFCC, when it's involved, sometimes, given the amount of space that they allow in their, in their projects, that sometimes that was required. So that's more of a question, that we're advocating for. I mean, like, a teacher office was required? Is that what you're saying? Well, just that's, to make rooms more, you know, rather than sitting and doing your work when your class is not in your classroom, in your classroom, you might go to an office, something like that. So that was just, that was more of a question, I think.
I think that's all they did?
I don't know that it's required, but...
I think they wanted, they had so much square footage that they wanted to use for classrooms.
Right. Yeah, that was more the question, because it's not being advocated for that. I can understand that. Thank you. Okay. And then the prioritization of deep renovations and the construction list, and just where is that at?
That is not started.
So there's nothing to discuss.
That will be...
That will be part of what you guys are working on.
This process, and it's going to take us... I'm going to have to be private, just be private, the principals, and we'll get there.
I will venture against, manage against, that at the top of the list is going to be school security. Mike and I talked about it at length. You know, we've invited the community and parents in on Thursday to talk again about school security. So that, I think, will absolutely be part of this plan, that really would kind of cross over in both areas.
cross over in both areas.
Where could you venture a couple more priorities?
I think electric. I mean, and, and while it's an infrastructure piece, it really is a productivity, educational piece. I mean, I was here early, couldn't find the extension. Carlos was looking for an outlet. Guess what? This is the newer part of the building, and we don't have enough outlets. I mean, that's just the way of our life here, and so I think things like that would be a priority. I think small spaces where our intervention specialist, our specialty teachers, or our related services, speech, OT, school psych, where they can meet privately with kids. We are so desperate for those. Even just a tutor working with a child who needs help in reading. I mean, right now here, you're on display for everybody in the world. So I think that those types of things will rise to priority. I think, Joey, I heard you earlier, as I was walking out, food service, just space for kids to really eat. I think those rise to the top of my head, and they might have different ideas. And then, of course, we have the user surveys as well.
David has a question. Yeah, I mean, something that's come up for, I've worked in a building that's been renovated, same age, renovated, gosh, it's been 10 years now. Technology, wiring, things like that. It's huge. The disparity between Mills Lawn and what I've got, document cameras, smart boards. Smart boards are being thrown out now. They don't have smart boards here, and they're, we're already throwing them out in my building.
Can you tell me where you are today?
I mean, I'm sorry, Beaver Creek. It's, I'm in an elementary building, built in the 50s. They renovated five buildings at the same time, did it over a summer. I think there were two buildings that were, these two different summers. That would be a really good, it's not comparable because of what you alluded to, is financing will be totally different in Beaver Creek than it would be here, but it would be a similar building to Mills Lawn. I really don't have an idea about the high school. It's really, it's a different situation. But they did manage it real well, but there was, it was still very expensive. But we're rewired, they rewired just this year. I mean, Mills Lawn is really modern technology. If they're rewiring, it's already been two or three rewires. The internet technology there, they're constantly doing things to update and improve.
So to piggyback off something you just said, David, sorry about some of your, on the prioritized list, you had electrical, then AC. Are there things, though, that we need to wait? And it seems to me like we're going to need a deep assessment of regular thoughts, and maybe from Mike, before you could do much about it. For instance, I've got electrical. I don't know, we can't say it's good or bad. How do you know that we can just add outlets? Has anyone done an assessment on how much amperage we're pulling for classes? Is the system designed to handle that? Do we have the right wiring in? I mean, of course, this building, we wired it up in '52 when it was built. I don't know if we can just go and add outlets to a classroom.
There's script, it's very specific to what you can.
So I think that we need, at some of the prioritized lists, we may need to kind of wait until we get a deeper assessment on electrical, one, maybe the HVAC, if we know, if we're just listing controls, but controls can be a, can be a sink of cash, especially on an old HVAC system. So it may not be worth coming until you've got a bit of analysis of where the current systems are, so.
When do you go back to school?
Teachers come August 12th. We're just about a month out.
When are the classrooms occupied, the students and places are on?
August 7th, 18th, whatever that, that next Thursday is.
To your point, we need to do a load summary in each electrical panel. So we put a little device in the electrical panel that's a basically meter, and so we can determine what each panel, how much power each panel is taking, and that gives us an idea of how much we can add to each panel. So it'd be something we'll have to do when after school starts.
But do you want to know from users what their, I mean, the reports that we put together as a committee, do you, doesn't that help you?
No, I, I like to know that.
I mean, can you tell just by looking at a building what's working, what's not? Don't you need to hear from the people who use it, and then?
Certainly would like that. I mean, I'm not necessarily.
You may not agree with it all, or whatever, but you might find that there's, oh, well, the answer to that is simple, this or that, but it would be helpful.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
So in your, in your maintenance, are you pretty much going to fly with your own group and come up with your position? Or are you going to review the documents or what?
So for that preliminary report, yes, I'm going to tell you what we think. And then you're going to tell us what you think, and we'll have a discussion.
The other report, if you want to have a clean slate.
Yes, yes. So kind of unbiased, and then we'll have a discussion and.
I would find it very helpful if we could take a moment and kind of revisit the timeline. I recall when we started, I thought we were talking about important things happening in the fall, and I wonder if that's still practical. I mean, I understand where there are long-range planning aspects to this that involve deadlines for putting things on balance, plans being made, and so forth, and it's impossible, but just if we could hit that.
Yep. We, we have not, we have missed all fall deadlines for getting on the ballot. Correct.
Yeah.
So, I mean, in, in a way, I think that might be helpful.
Well, we weren't expecting to do that.
No, but I think at board meetings, I know Amy, who said we could do this for November. We, we can't. So I think, I think, is that what you're asking, Scott?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering what our sense of process and, you know. I'm hearing a lot of work.
Well, this is a, this is a, this is a big discussion that involves the board and the community. I mean, if I'm going to weigh in, I think we're years overdue, years overdue for this. But does that mean May, or does that mean November of '23? I don't know. I think that's something that the board needs to discuss, kind of internally, as well as with the community. We do have other, you know, financial issues that will be coming up on the horizon in the next few years. I don't know if TJ or Judith have anything to say about that, but certainly not, not November if that's what people are asking.
You know, expectations may be the earliest.
Yeah, and, and I guess I will, I just want to say, you know, the difference between going in May or next November is just the timing of it. So the collection of it would be the same whether we vote in on something in May or November.
Because the, when does collection start, the following?
It, it depends. So, and what, what.
But you said the collection would be the same.
So, right, if you vote on something in May, so like the, I'd like to have the chart in front of me, but if you vote on something for May, like the renewal of the permanent improvement levy, or if you vote on it in November, it's not going to affect the collection date. The collection date will start at the same time. So there's not, there's not a difference other than getting it passed sooner.
I see. That's kind of good.
Yeah, I mean, you usually get three shots. You get three shots at a leveling.
November, May, November.
Yeah, November, May, November again. So like, the permanent improvement that we have that's coming on, we would have to go this November, May, or next November to keep that money, or, you know, or change it at that point. But there's not a, you know, if you ran something this November, you could collect on it sooner than next November. But if you run something in May, you're not going to be able to collect on it sooner than you would if you voted on it the following November.
All right. Is there any other questions, comments? Yeah.
I just want to say thank you to those of you who are volunteering your time to really think about these issues in great depth. And Judith, you really have a challenge, I think, to get, you know, have everybody coming together with this, these great open minds and looking at these with new, from new perspectives. It's a huge challenge. And, you know, even though TJ's the only person I recognize from school pickup, I know Mrs. Slaughter, of course, and I grew up with your son, Mr. Papania. And so I know that you all have vested interests in these buildings and these places in this town. And it's tough. I think it's emotionally tough for us, because we, as a town, really only get to do this, like, once in our life. So it's a big deal. It's a really big deal, and we all want to get it right. And I think if we, it's, it's just going to be really important this time around to focus on the things that we agree on and, and find where that, find that inspiring vision to take us there. So thank you.
I'll just, just echo the thanks. I don't know how many of these meetings I'll come to, but I just really appreciate all the effort y'all have put into this. Being in this room is kind of triggering. I was like a parent with, who's usually here for IEP meetings, and it just, I just really appreciate all the effort that all of y'all have put into trying to work this out for our kids.
I think we can get out early. Thank you.